Good evening. It is six o'clock, so we're going to call the Thursday, March 20th, special meeting of the Plan Commission in Wauwash County. The order here. Purpose of the meeting is to gather information about the carbon capture and sequestration project that Poet is proposing. First off for us, we're going to work on a roll call here with the board.
Randy Kerlis. Jeff Claus. Sam Han.
Here.
Mark Hyland.
Here.
Doug Rice.
Mike Bruce.
Jeff Shorkin.
Here.
Sherri Slay.
Here.
Joe Vogel. We have a form.
Okay, tonight, our meeting is informational only. For the Plan Commission to receive information and the public information about the project being proposed, there will be no vote, no action will be taken by the Plan Commission tonight. At this time, if Poet is starting to get ready, I've got a little housekeeping things to go, but they'll be right here. I think while they're getting ready, the Poet and Vault will, at the finish of their presentation, I'm sorry, we will open the floor to members of the Plan Commission to ask questions and present information. After that, we will have several presenters that would like to be heard, and if they have interest in the business, then, or possible future projects. Then after that, we will have time for the public comment. We would like to ask that people be held to a two-minute time limit per person wishing to speak, and that way we can hear from everyone. Our board rules are that we cannot go any longer than 10 o'clock for our meetings, so we have a hard cut at that point, until about 9:50. If the questions are still going, we will cut those off, so we can have 10 minutes of discussion time up here to see how we proceed and go forward. So we'd ask that everyone be courteous to each other, don't talk over each other, don't talk over the presentations. If you want to come forward to make a formal comment, we're kind of up to the mic up here, state your name, and ask a question to the board. So I think that's pretty much all the housekeeping. So, turn it over to Poet.
Good evening. My name is David Pyle. I'm here to speak on behalf of Poet about the significant opportunity this project brings to Wauwash County. I feel blessed to work for a company that cares about our community. Since 2008, Poet has been a strong economic partner here, and we remain committed to creating long-term value for local farmers. At the same time, I recognize that projects like this come with questions and concerns. I had many of the same questions when I first learned about carbon capture and sequestration. While geological storage may be unfamiliar locally, it is an established industry with rigorous standards. Poet and Vault are committed to ensuring this project is safe, responsible, and beneficial for everyone involved. This isn't just where I work, it's where I live. My family and friends are here. I want to see this community thrive, not just today, but for generations to come. Our North Manchester facility processes 90 truckloads of corn per day from nearly 900 farmers across 155,000 acres in northern Indiana. For perspective, Wauwash County itself has 635 farms covering 167,000 tillable acres. In Indiana and nationwide, 40% of the U.S. corn crop finds its way into biofuel and distillers grains. As demand for biofuels has grown, so has the price of corn and the value of farming, strengthening our agricultural economy. Remarkably, corn yields have doubled since the ethanol industry began, allowing corn to keep up with demand. Farmers now face greater uncertainty, particularly in global trade markets. Our production process is simple. One-third of the corn that we grind becomes ethanol, one-third becomes high-protein animal feed and cornmeal, the final third is clean fermented CO2. Almost half of the 34 Poet facilities across the corn belt bottle CO2 for use in carbonated beverages, fire extinguishers, food preservation, and dry ice. Some farmers occasionally ask me about a Poet CO2 truck they saw driving down the interstate. I explain that those trucks do not come from North Manchester because the market is not readily available in our area, but there is, however, a growing market in removing CO2 from the atmosphere. Corn is one of the most technologically advanced crops in the world. Through photosynthesis, it efficiently captures the sun's energy, turning it into food, fuel, and countless other resources. Post-bioprocessing facilities harness this power by bringing together carbon and energy in one location for efficient processing. The market is now demanding low-carbon liquid fuels. For our industry to remain competitive, we must adapt. For our farmers to thrive, we must continue creating value from corn. Capturing biogenic CO2 will lower our carbon score, keep our industry viable, and ensure long-term economic success. Most importantly, achieving a lower carbon score will allow us to unlock and access new markets that are currently out of reach. Many states and countries have low-carbon fuel standards that limit where our ethanol can be sold today. Additionally, sustainable aviation fuel is a fast-growing industry that is demanding low-carbon ethanol as a key ingredient. By lowering our carbon score, we can drive up demand for corn and position Wauwash County as a leader in ag-based energy without harming valuable topsoil. At Poet, safety is our priority. For 17 years, we have been responsible neighbors in this community, creating jobs, supporting local businesses, and operating safely. We understand that this project raises questions, and we are committed to being transparent, listening, and addressing concerns. The project is still in an initial vetting phase, and we expect two-plus years ahead of us before operations are in full swing. We fully support rigorous state and federal regulations to ensure the protection of all Wauwash County residents. Poet and Vault will continue working with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources and the EPA to ensure we meet and exceed the necessary standards. As I wrap up, I would like to take us back to 2006, when Wauwash County heard that an ethanol plant might be coming to town. Some saw an opportunity, better corn prices, more jobs, and economic growth. Others had concerns. It is natural to have concerns. For months, the community debated. Some pointed out that ethanol plants had to operate safely elsewhere under strict regulations. Others saw the potential benefits for farmers, yet uncertainty remained until trust was built. Going on 18 years since Poet started buying corn locally, the concerns that were raised never came true because they were carefully mitigated. The plant has operated safely, protecting the environment, and strengthening the local grain market. Now, a new opportunity is before us. Will we let worries hold us back, or will we embrace the lessons of the past and move forward toward a stronger future? Two years ago, Poet evaluated numerous companies with expertise in geological storage. After careful review, Vault was selected because of their proven experience, advanced technology, and a commitment to exceeding the highest safety standards. This project is still in its very early stages, and we remain committed to working closely with our community to ensure it is done right. We believe that together, we can build a stronger future. With that, I'd like to turn things over to Craig from Vault 441, who will provide more detail on the project.
Yeah, thanks, David, and thank you to the Plan Commission for the invitation, and thank you, community members, for your time today. My name's Craig. I'm here with my colleague, Susan. I am a professional engineer. I'm not a professional public speaker, so please bear with me. I assume to be a professional father. I have a son on the way, and, you know, God willing, he will be born in the next three or four weeks here. So today, we're going to talk about carbon capture and sequestration. I hope everyone leaves here with a better understanding of what it is. What is carbon capture and sequestration? How and where do you store it? How do you make sure it's stored securely? And who regulates carbon capture and sequestration? So before getting into it, a little bit of background with this project. We started off engagement roughly a year and a half ago. We've met with landowners representing approximately 11,000 acres surrounding the facility. We have voluntary participation of 2/3 of those landowners for core space, and I will explain what core space is. And we've also met with representatives across Wauwash County, within the town of Manchester, economic development, grow Wauwash. A little more specifics about this specific project we're talking about. We're taking carbon that is currently emitted into the atmosphere, and we're storing that deep underground. We have voluntary participation that I mentioned, and there is no pipeline involved with this project. There is a compressor on the facility, a small 4-inch flow line that connects the compressor to an onsite well. All permanent activity is going on Poet's private property. As part of the process David mentioned, working with EPA, we will be developing an emergency response plan that will be done in consultation with local first responders. We understand that this is different than what they're trained for today, and we have done this with other communities, and we commit to doing that here. We've heard some feedback, too, on the way we've done our outreach in our meetings. We wanted to provide this email, so you can all take that down, provide feedback to us, any questions you have to the project that are not answered today. So as we get into, what is carbon capture and storage? It's the process of capturing, compressing, permanently storing CO2 in a secure, deep, underground geologic formation. What is a deep underground geologic formation? Well, we'll get into that. First, let's talk about capture. So as David mentioned, you've got corn, yeast, water that goes into the fermentation process. You have three products coming out of that. You have your feed, your dried grain, you have ethanol, and you have CO2 that currently today is emitted into the atmosphere, roughly a third of each. The capture process is taking that CO2, you're capturing that, and you're storing it deep underground. This is an example of another Indiana ethanol plant that is currently capturing a portion of their CO2. You can see in the top-right picture, that is the stack, that is where the CO2 is going into the air. They've connected a pipe to that stack and captured that. In the main big picture, you see the flow line that goes over to a compressor. From the same plant, you can see pictures of trucks, and these trucks are taking the CO2. I'm sorry. Thank you. I told you I wasn't a professional. Yeah, that's a little bit better. Do you want me to go back at all?
Just slow it down.
Gosh, thank you. Okay, I'll slow this down a little bit. So you can see my pointer here. This is the stack, and this is where the CO2 is going into the air, and there's a pipe connected to it that's capturing a portion of that CO2. It's going over to the CO2 compressor, and then that CO2 is going into trucks for industrial uses, for food and beverage grade, for fire extinguishers for water purification. CO2 is used in many different industries today. We're not talking about utilization, we're talking about storage, deep underground storage. And let's talk about what that is. And the easiest way to start is to talk about what wells we may be most familiar with. So a typical home water well may be 100 to 150 feet. Industrial water wells may be 300, 350 feet. If we keep going deeper, we're drilling deeper, we're going to encounter this formation called the Trenton Formation. The Trenton stretches across 22 counties in Indiana. It's hydrocarbon-bearing, it has natural gas in it. There's lots of wells in Indiana that are drilled into the Trenton. The reason there's natural gas in this formation is because it's been trapped in it by the Makoka. That's another formation that sits on top of it. It's a shale, it's a sealing formation. It has kept the natural gas trapped in this Trenton formation for millions of years. The Trenton is about 435 million years old. So here, we're 900 to 1200 feet, and the depth of the Trenton varies across the 22 counties in Indiana. So we're going to keep going deeper into the earth, another 3,000 feet. There's roughly four sales force towers in Indiana stacked on top of each other. As we're drilling down, we're going through all different types of shales and dolomites and sandstones and different sealing formations, till we get to the non-strian formation, or the core space that we're talking about here. Right above the non-strian sandstone formation is a shale called the O'Clare Shale, and that's about 400 feet thick, so about the length of a football field. And that is our primary sealing formation, similar to the Makoka that we talked about that keeps the natural gas and has kept the natural gas in the Trenton for millions of years. We have another sealing formation that is on top of the non-strian sandstone. So this is where the CO2 would be stored, it's the non-strian sandstone formation. We've had questions of, is this a tank? This is not a tank. We're not installing a tank underground. It's an underground formation, and it is a very extensive formation. It stretches across several states, actually, and it varies in thickness. In some areas, it's 100 feet thick, in other areas, it's 1,000 feet thick. In some areas, it's very deep. The top of the non-strian formation in the middle of Michigan is very deep, and other places, it's not as deep. What other uses are there for the non-strian? There's no other uses for it other than storing fluids, very salty water. In some cases, 200 to 300,000 ppm, very salty water. That's where the CO2 is stored, the non-strian formation. And then you lead into the next question, how do you ensure that it is stored there securely? And that's very important to us, to make sure we're putting CO2 and it's staying there. So we talked about the home water wells, 100 to 150 feet. Industrial water wells may be 300 feet. Regional oil and gas wells, the Trenton across Indiana, 900, 1200 feet. Sequestration well, deep in this area, 3,000 feet plus. We also installed two other wells as part of the project, actually three, the monitoring one. So we drilled a well that sits right above the O'Clare Shale, and that is to detect if anything made it through the O'Clare Shale. We never expect anything to make it through. We're monitoring 24/7 pressure and temperature. And it's not our only seal. We've got multiple seals that go all the way up, and you've got the Makoka, we've called it the Glenwood Seal, the Davis Seal, and the O'Clare Seal. So this is one of the ways that we monitor, we prove the CO2 is staying underground, deep, deep underground. We've got another observation well, the deep observation well, that is within the non-strian. It doesn't sit above, it goes within the non-strian, and that helps us track where the CO2 is going. So we have a pressure point where we're injecting the CO2, and we have another pressure point some distance away from the primary injection well. We're also drilling additional shallow monitoring wells. We call them shallow, they're shallow compared to our other wells that are greater than 2,000 feet, and that's for confirmation of, we know what the water quality is before, and we're tracking on a quarterly basis, making sure the water quality is what it was before we started injecting CO2. Another question they have, okay, I understand the geological formations, I understand how extensive they are, they're very thick, shales are preventing any movement. Well, we're drilling a hole through those intervals. And so much oil and gas, if you want to get natural gas out of the Trenton, you have to drill a hole through the seal first. So we're drilling our well through the seal, we have to be very careful and cognizant of creating a great bond with the rock. So we're going first down with our primary surface casing. And then we'll go to about 600 feet, we're going to cement that in. So you've got steel and cement. And then inside of that, we're going to go with another drill bit and go to TD, to the bottom of the well, cement that in, so you've got steel, cement, steel, cement. And then inside of that, this tubing we're referencing, that's where the CO2 is going to be injected. So between the CO2 and your reservoir, you've got steel, steel, cement, steel. In between your tubing and your casing, we're monitoring that 24/7, ensuring there's no leaks in our tubing. We're going in annually and scanning the integrity of our well. We're building with corrosion-resistant alloys. CO2 in the presence of water can be corrosive, we understand that, and we're using 25-throw materials to prevent corrosion within our well. This is a side view, you know, this is not to scale, obviously, but we cut into the side of the well, so you can see a better picture of the well construction, much different than a traditional oil and gas well. So drilling with your first surface casing that I just described, cementing that in with kind of the hash lines you can see there, and then your second string that you're cementing in into the non-strian formation, and then I've illustrated in purple there the CO2 where it's injected, and then you're above zone monitoring well, it's sitting above the O'Clare Shale, and that's how you're ensuring that the CO2 is staying where you put it. So we've gone through, how do you capture CO2? Where are you putting the CO2? How do you securely inject the CO2 into the non-strian? How is CCS regulated? Well, it's regulated at both the federal and the state level. So the EPA regulates this, and then through, in Indiana, it's the Department of Natural Resources, the same group that regulates oil and gas production. So how is it regulated by the EPA? There's a Class 6 well process. So injecting fluids into the earth, there's different classifications of wells. There's Class 1 wells, Class 2 wells, this is a Class 6 well. Very extensive technical work goes into these applications. You have to prove to the EPA that this is a suitable geologic formation to hold CO2, and it's not going to leak. You have to commit to a well construction practice. You have to commit to monitoring plans, you have to commit to financial assurance, and I'll get to financial assurance on the next slide. Within this process, it's at least a two-year process, sometimes longer than that, there's a public comment period, and with this project, we expect that to be in 2026. There's an illustration on the side here, and this was done by a project up in Canada, the Offspring Project, that's been injecting for over 10 years, and it just illustrates all these different layers of rock. I think they've done a better job of scaling trees on the top, and we've put an example of something maybe familiar in the sales force tower in Indianapolis. So let's talk about financial assurance. So sometimes we get a question of, why does Vault ceases to exist, and Poet ceases to exist? Whose responsibility is this project, is this well? And within this Class 6 process, operators are required to prove that they have the financial responsibility to manage this project through the entire life of the project. So in this case, it's over $10 million that we're putting out with the EPA, and that ensures there is money to plug the well at the end of the project for the post-injection site care. When the project is done injecting, we are not relieved of our obligation. It's up to 50 years after that we're watching and proving that the CO2 has not moved, it has not migrated, it has not come out of the injection interval. That is our responsibility, and that is incorporated within this financial assurance program of the EPA that's put in place to provide comfort that, yes, if Vault were ever to go away, or Poet to go away, that there is the financial assurance in place to manage these projects. And another note here, this was a reference to earlier in the presentation, there's different types of emergency and immediate response. There is the piece described here of immediately ceasing injection. So your monitoring well sees pressure or temperature, you're stopping immediately. You're understanding what's happened, you're identifying the EPA, and you're working through your response plan to that. And then there's the emergency response plan with local responders. So the surface facility is related to injection. This is higher pressure, this is all on Poet's property, so through Poet, in addition to Poet's emergency response plan, that's something we'll be working through, because CO2 is a little bit different than the first responders may be familiar with responding to currently. We talked about the EPA, that's at the federal level. At the state level, legislation began in 2022, just this week, it went through the Senate and the House, and there was amendment to the bill, there was an application fee added, it worked on some language, and rulemaking is undergoing right now. So we have not submitted an application to Indiana because they're working through those rules. We expect maybe mid-summer that those will be all completed. So we get this question a lot, too, of, you know, there was an incident in Surcharsha, Mississippi, where a pipeline ruptured, and we get a question of, is that risk possible here? And the answer is no. We don't have a pipeline. We have a short 4-inch flow line that connects our compressor to our wellhead. We don't have a giant 24-inch pipeline, there's no off-site pipeline. It is an onsite project. Everything is on Poet's property. How do we prove that? Well, there's something called dispersion modeling you can do. And the dispersion modeling looks at how far the CO2 goes if there is a rupture. So within our flow line, a flow line can hold two tons of CO2. There's a rupture, where does that two tons of CO2 go? How far does it stretch? So we've monitored it to be less than 500 feet, and you could ask, well, what is less than 500 feet? The point where CO2 in the atmosphere reaches 4% is less than 500 feet. What does 4% mean? 4% is roughly the CO2 you'd be breathing in if you're wearing a mask for over five minutes. And this is the work that we have done to prove it, this is an onsite project, and this is the response we give to this question. This was a horrible incident that happened at this project. We do not have the same risk here. So to summarize the things that I wanted to go through at the beginning, what is carbon capture and storage slash sequestration? And we're taking CO2 and putting it into a secure, deep, underground reservoir. In this case, it's a non-strian reservoir. It's not a tank, it stretches across multiple states, it varies in thickness from 100 to thousands of feet. It's very deep. How is it secure? We've got geologic security. It's similar to the Trenton, you don't have natural gas coming up into your water, it's held in by seals, shale seals, that prevent the movement of fluid underground. We have many of those layers. Here, our primary layer is the O'Clare Shale. It's very thick, it's 400 feet thick, similar length to a football field. And then finally, who regulates sequestration? So it's both the federal and the state level, there's extensive regulations in place. The work that we've done and put into it, and then the EPA goes and redoes that work to prove that we have picked a project location, and we are doing the proper well construction, the proper monitoring to prove that this project is safe. So just going back to this project, now we're capturing carbon that is currently emitted today, it's going into the air, we have strong voluntary participation, and 2/3 of the landowners are very supportive of this project. We're not stopping there. We've got other projects in Indiana. We've got a project down south of here that has 99% participation. We're not stopping at 99, and it's more than just voluntary participation. There are partners in the project, they're happy to have it, they understand the value to the corn growers in the area, the value to the landowners, the value to the facility. So they're very supportive, and we've been great partners with them. I need to reiterate, there is no off-site pipeline with this project. All surface activities will be on Poet's property. And as I talked about at the beginning, we will be working through an emergency response plan with local responders on the appropriate ways to address projects like this. I really appreciate all your time, and I think we're going to get into some questions from the Plan Commission. I appreciate the invitation from the Plan Commission, and yeah, thank you very much.
I'd like to have, just make a couple comments here quickly beforehand. First and foremost, we'd like to express our thanks to MSD, the administration that's allowed us to be here tonight. I see Mr. Keefe over there, along with Mr. Snyder, who helped us secure the facility, and Mr. Elsroth, who's here doing the AB work and setting up the tables and everything for us, appreciate that. Also, we'd like to thank you, Walters, with Wauwash County MTA, who's providing such deep geographic control, and I see there's Walters out there, the name of Key, along with the Sheriff's Department, who has several people here on staff. And I'd like to just say, I'm very proud of the way our community has dealt with these types of meetings, and look forward to telling our community as the very respectful and well-formed group of taxpayers who wouldn't think of causing any issues tonight, I'm sure. Again, tonight, this is an informational meeting only, and no votes will be made. I'd like to clarify, it's important to clarify that the Plan Commission, our office's role along with the commission itself, our primary responsibility is working together to ensure that any proposed project complies with local zoning ordinance and land use regulations. We are tasked with protecting the interests of all Wauwash County residents and safeguarding the county's long-term well-being. This includes carefully evaluating any potential impacts of any project in our community, no matter of location within Wauwash County. Since carbon sequestration is relatively new technology overall, and there are many unknowns regarding its long-term effects in the state of Indiana, and I can say that with much certainty, since there are currently zero ongoing carbon capture and 56 wells anywhere at use of Indiana. As stated before, in 2022, the state did sign into law, Pulpit Law 163, which stemmed from Indiana Hospital 1209, which is now considered the ANCO 1439-2, which established a framework for underground storage of carbon to outside. Now, within that law, it needed a valid permit issued by the department, and in this case, as stated earlier, too, that would mean the Department of Natural Resources or the Gas Division. On Tuesday, this Tuesday this past week, in first reading, that was completed. I can tell you that was approved, and is nothing other than the process to obtain the permit, and nothing to do with any local setbacks or zoning regulations within those requirements. As a matter of fact, on the website for the DNR Division of Oil and Gas, under DNR's News, for that day, it's 33. news for that date, the 3825 Carbon Sequestration Rules, part of the way down the page on that front page, it states, "Decisions on the location of carbon pipelines and carbon injection will continue to be overseen through local zoning." In my eyes, when and if this public law is finalized, it will only outline the procedures for the company to obtain the permits through various governmental agencies, and thus the Walbach County as the home rule of such additional requirements, since the law laid forth is not a comprehensive plan of any type. There is no specific regulation set forth in this law as to setup requirements, zoning restrictions of any kind, and equitable compensation of course-based payouts to owners who do not agree with or want anything to do with carbon sequestration project on or under their property. And Indiana Code 1439-25 states, "The applicants will construct, operate, and maintain the proposed carbon sequestration project in accordance with both local, state, and federal laws." I know the fact that in this law, it states itself, it places the local government first in this order. Normally, you would never see that. Normally, it's federal, state, then local. And I know that may not mean much to some people, but I think that's a huge in this case. And I think the intent of the law is for our local governments to regulate this issue as they deem appropriate and within the constraints of other applicable laws as set forth by the state and federal governments. So at this time, I'd like to hand this over to anybody else with the Plan Commission who has any kind of questions or responses.
Poet ends up not being here. You have to monitor it for 50 years. Who monitors that for 50 years? And then what is the financial assurances to protect us? Is it bonds within the state, or is it held locally in the local government to whether capping the well or whatever that might be? So if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense. It's a great question. Thank you. So the financial assurance is set up, so as you mentioned, in the case Volt goes away, we don't intend to go away. We intend to run this project and monitor this project for the whole life of the project. If we were to go away, the money is with the Environmental Protection Agency, with the EPA, and it is in place so that they can monitor the well, they can take control of it, and they can make sure that the obligations within the permit are followed. Is that, is your question?
Yeah. Sorry. And the other thing, more about Volt, you know, you talked about Poet, talked about picking you guys because you have a proven track record and so on and so forth. But how long have you guys been in business? And what's the, I mean, who's funding you guys?
Yeah, great question. So our CEO started Volt in 2021, and that's because he was working in carbon capture and sequestration about 15 years ago. So he worked on a project in Kentucky, a project in Alberta. Alberta's been injecting CO2 and carbon capture for about 12 years now. The Kentucky product never went forward. So when the opportunity came, our CEO put a group together of us that had experience in CCS, we're about 45 people today that have worked on products all over the world, CCS products all over the world, including the South West project in Alberta, 12 years of injection, there's another one in Saskatchewan, that's about 10 years now. But we, as an organization, have been around for four years.
I have a question. You had mentioned that it takes two-plus years to go through all the federal agencies to get proof to do this. My question more is on the well. You said one time that it will never happen to your system because it's four inches. But how much pressure do your compressors have to have to push it down 3,000 feet? And whatever that number is, is immaterial, that is still pressure. Is there any safety device, check valves or system in play somewhere on the vertical part of that that will control leak or bleed? And what is that pressure that it has to control?
Yeah, great question. So I want to go back to that slide and clarify, because I wasn't trying to come across that a pipeline rupture could never happen. That's all that I was trying to say. We don't have a 24-inch pipeline, we have a 4-inch pipeline. And if there was a rupture on that 4-inch pipeline, I discussed what would happen, right? There's a dispersion radius, and we can model that. You know, it's a very small volume of CO2. At this Surcarsha incident, there was 1,800 tons released. We have two tons that can fit in a pipeline, right? So I appreciate you asking me to clarify that. Yes, there's a safety valve within the well, there's several. There's one right at the wellhead, there's one within your well tree, and then there's a downhole valve as well to prevent backflow. Check valves, absolutely, yeah. The well is set up to handle pressure, absolutely. With the example? This one? Yeah, I mean, it's hard to see the scale there in the size of the line, but... Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
I remember in the presentation we had at a Poet facility, you stated plans to sequester approximately 1,000 metric tons per day. Is that still what you plan on doing?
Yes, the exact details of the permit, Craig would have to speak to that, but we would plan to sequester around 250,000 tons per year.
Per year? That's one of the questions that I had, because if you go on the Poet's 2023 gas report to the EPA, it shows the facility has emissions of only 123,000 metric tons, which there's a big difference there. Where would the difference be coming from?
I can take that. Biogenic CO2 is not reported on that website. So the only thing that's reported is emissions from your boiler or dryer. Those are natural gas firm. Those are the emissions that are reported. Their biogenic emissions are not reported.
Okay, those would be possible.
Possible. Those are possible.
So you have a percentage of CO2 that's produced by Poet that won't be captured to be sequestered? You have a percentage of it?
I'd have to calculate the CO2 from the boilers and dryers, the fossil CO2 versus the biogenic fermentation CO2. The intent is to capture 100% of the fermented biogenic CO2 off of the corn fermentation process.
And actually, that plant, the proposed pipeline, how many years do you plan to actually be injecting CO2 at that facility? The actual timeline for injection on that?
The permit, good question. The permit has been submitted for 12 years injection.
I know the Poet has expressed its desire to produce sustainable aviation fuel as part of the justification for this project. Well, this additional product calls a need to expand its current facilities.
Can you repeat the last half of the question?
Poet has expressed its desire to produce sustainable aviation fuel as part of the justification for this project. Well, this additional product calls a need to expand its current facility.
The ethanol that we produce would have a lower carbon score associated with it could be further processed, much like our corn well today leaves in the facility is processed in the biofuel.
As a check too, who would own the actual equipment used to sequester the CO2? Would that be Poet or would that be Vault 44?
That would be Vault.
So as part of the bipartisan budget act of 2018, owners of the equipment used for capture of CO2 can claim tax credits instead of the intent to capture the CO2. Does Vault 44 want to claim these tax credits?
We do not. Sorry, I should have clarified that. The Poet has been owned, what is classified as the capture, we will own downstream of the pipeline, the well, the parts that are actually involved with the sequestration. That is within our scope. So I apologize, and that is a clarification. Vault is not given credits for this.
At this time, I guess you'd also stated in your presentation, Vault writes itself on obtaining 100% voluntary participation. Are you willing to cancel the project if you do not get 100% participation?
It's a great question. It's one we get pretty often. So if you think about oil and gas production, it's hard to draw lines around which part of the Trenton that you own, which part your neighbor owns. And there is a mechanism in place there for if you want to produce your natural gas that's under your property, there's a mechanism so you can do that. If your neighbor doesn't want to do it, but you have enough support within that natural gas pool, there's a mechanism for gaining the value from your property. There's a similar mechanism in place for the value from storing CO2 on earth. If there is value for that, and people want to access that value and store CO2 in their property, there is a mechanism to do that if you're not able to achieve 100%.
Well, these are just questions I've been asked, and I'm forwarding on and asking as part of this. You stated that you're using direct air capture. Is that still your plan? I think that was part of the original, you're not doing direct air capture?
No.
What process are you using? What method of capture?
Direct air capture would be, my understanding is capturing CO2 out of the spring, for example, and pumping that out of there. Fermentation releases CO2. The living organism, yeast cell, releases CO2. So off of fermentation, it goes through a strug. We remove the VOCs, and then it passes out, currently today, through the stack. That is the CO2 that we would capture.
It's not considered direct air capture? It's not considered direct air capture?
Correct, that's a different technique.
For the non-voluntary landowners, when you inject that CO2 to the ground, you can't control where that goes, but then that's your geological shale, right? So if it goes on to someone else's property, but they don't want to be part of it, you just don't pay them then? Or is that, how do you justify that?
Part of the Indiana State Process that we mentioned that just went through this week in their rulemaking, they're defining the rules for that, that everyone is paid. Similar to oil and gas, you know, when you're pulling natural gas up the ground, everyone is paid as part of that unit. It turns into a unit with multiple ownership in the unit. It's, yeah, we, there is some control we have where the CO2 goes underground, and we're able to monitor it and see where it's going. So there is the ability to do that, but to control by parcel boundaries is not possible.
My question is just in concern with monitoring. Is that done by Vault? Is that done by another company? And then in terms of not just the pipeline itself, but the spread of CO2 in terms of where it's going?
The monitoring is done by Vault. I mean, we do have, in some cases, third-party contractors for things like seismic acquisition. We don't own seismic acquisition trucks. We contract an organization that's owned in Indiana, Racer Seismic, and they do the seismic for us. But there's the monitoring and the team that's watching all of the transmitters and all of the data, that's all done by Vault. And the second question, Jeff, sorry, was...
Just, is it continuous or is it sporadic? What's the monitoring in terms of, is it all the 24/7, but not just the pipeline, but those surrounding areas?
Yeah, some of the monitoring is done continuously, like the well that, our monitoring well is continuous 24/7, and we've got passive seismic stations, those are 24/7. The 3D seismic is not something that's all the time. You know, it's every, you do a seismic survey at the beginning of the project, and then it's every four to five years afterwards. That is more on a schedule. There are things that are scheduled. There are scheduled inspections of the well to confirm integrity. So it's all part of the measurement and monitoring plan that is submitted to the EPA and reviewed, and they give feedback on it before we have it approved. It's called an M and V, Measurement and Monitoring and Verification Plan.
Have your per regulations, you're required to conduct 3D seismic testings. Will you plan to ask the County Commission for approval to do that next round of seismic testing?
The 3D seismic needs to be done before injection starts. So the permitting process is a long permitting process. It's potential early 2026, maybe late 2026. It really depends on how the permit moves on our timing for, and weather. You know, weather is really important to us, too. We had a seismic survey planned at another project we had in Indiana, and it was too wet. We didn't want to go and tear up people's fields. We worked with our landowner partners, and we deferred it to the next season, to when we had broken ground conditions, and we were able to execute that seismic survey with no damage to people's property.
And I have been asked too by people who are within the radius that do not want to be a part of this, will you be asking their permission to be on their property to do these 3D seismic testings? Or do you have to gain their approval to do so?
We cannot, and we will not enter anybody's surface property without their permission.
With that, you plan on compensating the state, county, or any private landowners for any damage that's done to driveways, tiles, drains, and any other personal property by the seismic testing equipment?
Yes, absolutely.
Is Rick Clutch here?
This question is... Is Rick Clutch here? Or Rick Clutch?
The gentleman did the answer of the pressure question. One of the committee members asked what the pressure was on the well. The question never got answered.
I'm saying the pressure question? I recall that I did not intentionally unanswer that question. At the wellhead, about 1,400 psi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. In previous meetings, the landowners have had before this, it was stated, hey, I stated... We had previous meetings before this with the landowners that was directly involved with the big circles that you had. And at that time, they said that if they didn't get 70% of the landowners to commit to this, that they couldn't do it. And I was just curious why that, what that means? Does that mean you already had 70% of the landowners that want to participate in this?
So the 70% relates to that mechanism that we're talking about creating a unit, right? Similar to oil and gas, a unit. Yes, there is a threshold of 70% for a unit to move forward with the project.
And if you don't get it, does that mean you're not doing it?
That's right.
Yeah, this, just for clarity here, we have a list. We've asked everybody to sign up. Anybody that wants to speak, we're going to go through that list. We did have somebody call ahead of time and ask if they could do a presentation that could last a little longer. Mr. Clutz is here to do that. And at this time, I'd like to ask the forecaster if he is okay with extending the two-minute time that we're going to request for this presenter. And then we will call up people as we go down the list and ask you to come up and ask your questions to, to Poet. Thank you. Have you state your name too?
State your name. So state your name and your address for the board and then you can go ahead and state from there.
I was trying to hope that I'd go last, just to say. But anyways, my name is Brent Clutz. I'm the vice president of Clutz Well Grilling. I'm past president of the Indiana River Water Association. And I hold an Indiana State Waterway License and I also have a federal license. I'm a fifth generation waterway griller and lifetime resident of Wallach County. I probably work for about 95% of everybody that's sitting out there. So before I get started, I would just like to ask the board and Poet. Well, mainly I want to ask the board, if Poet and Vault notified you that they have submitted a permit application with EPA? Okay.
That was a no?
That was a no? Okay. So that's been, that has been, alright. That's been submitted. It was submitted on the application for, they're calling the Vault Project here over at County of Paragras. I don't know how many, and you know that? Does that news to everybody? I know this is an information meeting and we're all still trying to wrap our heads around some stuff here. So that application date was submitted on 7/30/24. And then they also submitted one in Madison County, in Astor, 7/25/24. So they sort of the process here of doing this. It takes 24 months roughly for the permit process to go through. I reached out to my contacts at the Indiana DNR Oil and Gas Division. And I talked to them last week. They told me about the meeting on Tuesday. They said that they were trying to scramble around, trying to get some stuff together. So currently, Regent Five of the EPA Underground Injection Control is overseeing the project. UIC has a Class 6 Permit Tracker Database. So if you go to EPA's website and you type in Class 6, it will pop up. A database tracker, if you get in there, you might have to do a little searching around. But in that database, it will list all the projects that are currently in the permitting process in Indiana. So dates you want to keep in mind, the public comment time period for Paragras, tend to believe is going to start on 7/31/26. And the final permitting for the project is scheduled for 10/29/26. Those are all tentative dates. They're all subject to change. The public comment time period lasts 30 to 45 days. And this is the part where the public can request a hearing with EPA and all responsible parties involved in the project. This entire timeline is subject to change, obviously. Once the process gets further along, you'll be able to view the permit application that Vault submitted online. It's going to probably have a bunch of stuff on there that nobody understands. It's also going to have a bunch of stuff that's blacked out. I tried to look at the geological stuff. So when Craig, right? Yeah. So when you talk about that, that interests me because, you know, trying to find out what's down in the ground 3,000 feet is pretty hard to do. There's also another place that you can talk, you can reach out to and look at information on. It's called Citizens Action Coalition. It's a good resource. And right now, we're tracking nine carbon capture projects in the state of Indiana. The website for that is CITACT.org. Alright, so now that's a lot of the way. Now I'm just going to read some stuff here. And it's kind of my opinion, some of it's from me just knowing stuff and some of it's stuff I looked up. So, so what was asked about if I thank River Water for making contaminated by the CO2 injection well? The short answer is absolutely. I do not have a definite timeline on how soon this can happen. Any injection of any type of contaminant into the ground, regardless of depth, can potentially contaminate groundwater. Due to the history of carbon capture and sequestration track records on-site and pipeline failures, I ask myself what will happen first? A well injection failure, a pipeline leak, or complete pipeline failure? Which Craig's kind of eliminated that problem because you're keeping everything on post property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For monitoring well failure, a sizable earthquake due to the added pressure on tectonic plates or groundwater pollution. I do not have these answers. And if this project continues, I'm sure somebody's going to find out. The long-term contamination will probably occur very slowly, but barely any notice at first. No contaminants that are found in groundwater are arsenic and mercury along with others are more likely to occur with higher concentrations of carbonic acid associated with injecting, high concentrations of CO2 mixed with brine, which is saltwater, into the ground. Not to mention the added pressure which could lift the contamination through fractures in the confining layers, which are meant to help prevent contamination under normal ground pressures. I don't know, do you know what a typical, um, natural gas pressure pocket would be in this, in the ground?
It depends on the depth. I'm not aware of the Trenton program.
Alright. Somewhere I read that when they're putting the CO2 in the ground, they can only inject up to maximum 90% of what the formation is, in the box, correct?
Not even said of the fracture pressure that's there.
Of the fracture pressure? Yes. So how do you measure that fracture pressure?
You pull, there's something called coring that you do. So you go with a drill bit that it's got a hole in the middle of it and you core a piece of the rock out. You bring it to the surface, you bring it to a lab and you test the fracture pressure that way. So an actual piece of the rock.
Okay. Alright, so continuing on with my little spiel here. So, I'll be back after a spare second. So, so we're at the part where, you know, we're worried about contamination under, under, in the ground. So when you add in that water is being pumped out of the ground in the area in higher formations, you end up with, in layman's terms, somewhat of a, like, call it a push and pull attack underground water. Without getting into like crazy insane like hydrology dynamics and all that stuff, cone of depression and plumes and all this stuff. Let's just say there's a push and pull. When you pump water, water's going to come someplace, recharge. When you push, push it, it's got to go somewhere. With this being down in as hard as it is, that pressure is going to go probably out, wouldn't you say? More laterally, more than lateral? More laterally than vertical?
That's right.
Do you think? Within, in theory, in theory, everything's in theory here because nobody can go down there and actually look to see what's actually going on. According to the significant water withdrawal information from the Indiana DNR, Poet has potential water issues of 1.6 million gallons per day, which they, thus they draw out three wells and consolidate the tarors and limestone. They're the, they are the, when you're on the industry side, this is fully against life. It's like the industrial well, their wells are like 350 feet. They have two, one's like 350 and one's like 282 and, or anyway, they're a lot of them. So these are fair amount of water. The next major water withdrawal is the town of Manchester, with a daily water withdrawal potential of 6.62 million gallons per day. And they pump out five different wells and they have unconsolidated data and tarors. These two wells are in two different aquifer systems. There's a third aquifer, aquifer system two that's in there. It kind of runs like around in Serbia area. But there's a Numa Valley in the limestone that runs through the south part of North Manchester, down towards Volobery and cuts across north of Serbia, heading towards Hainan County. And those, those limestone reach like around 300 feet to somewhere there. This valley is also connected through aquifer system in the area. So basically, these three aquifer system, aquifer systems, push and pull. They pull water from each other, they push water and they just kind of hold together around here. So is it possible? Anything's possible, it could happen. It may not happen in our lifetime or in my, I don't, there's no way in that. I'm going to say that wasn't likely with all the layers that you're going through. Your leak points are going to be throughout the holes that you're drilling. Those are probably going to be your leak spots. And those are going to be more of a chance for water, groundwater to sneak up beside something that isn't supposed to be there. Now then, the short-term contamination could start almost immediately. So not necessarily in the groundwater, but on the surface. Has anyone here been around a big well, they're only oil field or anything like that? So it's pretty extensive and has multiple stages of operation. A Class 6 injection well will be constructed very closely to an oil well. You know, you didn't just say that there was some differences. But they will prepare the drill site by adding infrastructure such as roads, power, sewage. They're going to need water. They're going to have that part of drainage and stuff. Some of that will be eliminated because you're going to be on post property, correct? So some of that part will be eliminated. The well, the well rig, I assume that you guys are bringing in a platform rig to drill this thing? You're not just going to like bring in a whole rig and start drilling? I mean, my rig will drill 1,000 feet, but...
Probably a little bit, I don't know what rig you have, probably a little bit bigger than that, yeah?
Right, but will it be a platform rig or will it just be like a mobile operation rig?
Traditional like oiling gas rig, that's right, yes.
Well, that's kind of what I was hoping that you said. So they're going to be running large pump pumps, costly local diesel engines along with the transport system of semis. Bringing tooling, they're going to be bringing premixed drilling fluid, neat cement for grounding, steel pipe for casing, hauling containers and puddings from site to be disposed of. So there's going to be a lot of traffic going on around there. But also, they will be bringing a crew of workers traveling in and out of the drilling site 24 hours until the well's completed. Because once these rigs start turning, they don't stop until they're done. They typically work in two 12-hour shifts. Monitoring wells will also need to be drilled, which we all agree on that. One question that I had about that is, is where do you pick where you drill your monitoring wells?
The shallow monitoring well is going to be pretty close to your injection well. And the reason for that is to your point, you want to make sure that nothing's going up that wellboard. It's going through the, the ceiling formation, you want to make sure nothing's going up. That's where you want your first monitoring well. Your deep observation well, you want that a little bit further away so you have another data point. You've got a data point where your injection well is, you know pressure and temperature is there. You've got another pressure and temperature point some distance away from there.
And then you have another monitoring well there, what's that do?
Additional water wells that we will be drilling to confirm the water quality.
So as far as production for the well that's drilled, is total plant providing the water usage of those three wells that they have on the project? Or are you going to be, or are you going to be constructing another well for make-up water for the drilling process?
We will not be constructing another well for make-up water.
Okay. Alright, let's see here. Where am I on my, my thing here? Okay, so now we're down to well development. So well development practices may lead into using hydro fracking or acid to enhance the fracture zone. This is a very big process. And my thing is, it's probably better left in Texas than in our back door. We're on pressure, Vault. Do you have any fracture this zone that you're going to drill into?
No, no, to me not, we never will.
Okay. Will you use an asset to try to open up the pores or anything like that?
Pumps drilling is possible. I'm not a specialist, but it is possible.
So lastly, it was more for everyone that's here. My family has lived and around our own businesses in this community for over 100 years. We're a proud state, we have a good family owned and operated since 1914. And they're starting their sixth generation of father and son of waterway grilling and waterway systems services. Myself, Jackson, and Tom have discussed and researched the majority of dangers associated with the carbon capture and effects on groundwater. We have access to many avenues of information through our ongoing relationships with the Indiana DNR, IDM UK, and Indiana River Water Association. If anybody would like to talk further or have any other questions, I'll answer them as best I can. I would definitely, definitely encourage you guys to use the hotline, which I didn't know about until I got here, the email address that Craig had presented. You know, overall with everything, you know, I drilled a well a few years ago for Sweetwater. I go to a production well and I drilled a discharge well. So the discharge well and then the production well, we're both about 125 feet deep. They're both in limestone and they both pump about 100 gallons a minute. And that production well, I can pop out far more water out of it than I can inject in the ground because of pressure and stuff. So what I want to know is just how in the heck do you think that you're going to shove this shit down there? And it's going to stay there? Are you mixing it, are you just putting it down as a gas? Are you mixing it with water? Is this going to be an ongoing water siege project here that we're going to be dealing with?
No, we're not mixing it with water. It's CO2, it's in a supercritical state. So when you get above 1070 PSI, it acts as a supercritical fluid. And that's how we're injecting it for the reservoir.
So is that like 10 pounds 70 PSI or is that 1,000?
1070, 1,070, I think, the certification.
So 1,070 PSI, so you're going to be pushing 1,070 PSI down the hole?
That is the critical pressure. So when you go from a gas into a supercritical form, to the question asked earlier, if the wellhead, probably 1,400 PSI.
About 1,400. Alright. That's a heck of a compressor, yeah. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth noting that, you know this, you've got a lot of experience in drilling wells, that there's pressure there right now. The Mount Simon formation's at 1,200, 1,300 PSI today. The natural pressure of the reservoir. You have to overcome that to put the CO2 into the reservoir. And this is, there's many, many Mount Simon injection wells across the Midwest that have proved that this can be done safely.
So what is Mount Simon? So if something's stuck, like, look at, they should have put the screens in. Are you going to be screening this area, this zone? Or are you just going to be open the hole out the end, more like limestone, kind of well fractures and things in that? In that zone, when you get into the single stone zone here, are you going to be setting a screen down in there?
We're going to set casing all the way to the bottom. So 25 chrome casing all the way to the bottom. And then we need to poke holes in that casing for the CO2 to go outside of it.
So you're just going to drill some holes in the pocket?
We're going to put holes into the casing, that's it. Similar to oiling gas. You know, some of the wells in this area are open hole, you know, they'll only put a short... Some of the wells in this area are open hole, you know, they'll only put a short amount of casing and they'll leave open hole all the way to the bottom. And that allows some potential for contamination as you, there's nothing covering it. We're differently than, you know, we're going and cementing the thing and all the way to the bottom.
Okay, so you are in, so that stringer pipe's not gonna come out of there?
No.
So if you service this, if it gets a hole in it, you're either gonna hang it in the well or you're gonna sleeve it?
This piece with my cursor on, that's our tubing, that'd come out.
That can come out?
That can come out.
So what seals that?
There's a packer that you lock that into. Downhole.
What's, what kind of, what is the packer made of?
25 chrome material, so it's resistant.
So then are you grabbing it all the way to the surface with that? Or what is gonna be in that annual space between those two cases?
The annual space will be full of treated water. And then we're monitoring that 24/7. Good question.
Well, I don't think I have anything else. Thanks for your time and work. And like I said, if anybody has any questions, let me know. I can answer them the best I can. I'm not a hydrologist, but I am concerned about our community. Thank you. Thank you, Grant. We're just gonna go down the list here. Real quickly though, I did skip something that does have to do with the supercritical CO2. It is known in some research that we were told that there's no material that can withstand the supercritical CO2 without corrosion or damage. What materials are you planning to use? And how are you planning to mitigate any potential corrosion damage to these pipes?
CO2 itself, whether it's supercritical, whether it's gas, whether it's a liquid, CO2 is not corrosive. CO2 in the presence of water is corrosive. You pull the water out before it goes into the pipeline. There are dehydration processes, you pull the water out. And then downhole, the materials are 25 chrome. Because there is water in the Mount Simon formation, you can't pull the water out. So you put 25 chrome metals that are resistant to corrosion. Thank you.
We're gonna move on with our list. I did get another phone call before the meeting. Mr. Josh Lepel, is Mr. Lepel here?
Yeah, right here.
I know you wanted to speak and I'd like to give you the opportunity to hear quickly. Thanks, Brett, for talking. Everybody take care, everybody's in the sun, you guys have been doing it for four years. I work with machinists that are still stumbling all the way after four years. It baffles me that we have to sit here and ask somebody questions that's been doing this for four years. You're putting our community at a potential risk and you've got four years' experience doing this. I was gonna go around with this, but you blew on my mind. So is that right, four years?
I think of...
Our organization's been around for four years.
It makes me feel a lot better, you've been here for four years.
The people on our team have been working on CCS, some of them for their entire career.
I heard, I heard four years, but I'm good sitting up there trying to guide us.
No, no.
Yes, you are. So, anyway, I'm not taking advice, you've been doing it for four years, that's insane. I've hired people with work experience and I'm nice and clear boss. Anyways, good evening, everybody, it's Josh Lepel, I live at... Just northeast of Poet Plant, about one mile. This is really concerning to me for a lot different reasons, maybe some other, probably the same, but a little bit different. My wife and I have three children who suffer from Duchenne's muscular dystrophy. And I'd like to tell you this story about our home and how it got put where it was at. Some people in this room were involved in that project for a little bit, so they know about it. We have to start on our old residence in north of Towneville, north of North Manchester, where we lived for 15 years prior to moving out here. My wife and I are the parents, like I said, of two boys, Marcus and Max, who suffered from Duchenne's muscular dystrophy, a neurological disease that has our sons confined in wheelchairs. Prior to living here, we were living in a home that was not handicapped accessible, where it made our lives harder and now our residence is more like a prison than a home for our boys. We had different people looking into remodeling our old homes for our boys, but in the end, it just wasn't feasible for several reasons. I can tell you that not being able to fix your children's disease is horrible. And knowing that your boys are living in more of a prison than a home makes it almost unbearable as a father. Now, while we were living in this old home, I used to hunt on a property owned by an elderly lady who I became very good friends with over time, but I'd visit with her often. During our visits, she would always take the time to listen to me vent about our lives' many frustrations and challenges. She would often pray with me before I believed. During one visit, I told my friend how I felt that our boys are living in a prison and I did not see a good solution to their problem. I told her it was literally starting to kill me. She told me that she couldn't fix it, but she could pray with me about it. So we prayed, and during the prayer, she asked the Lord to free the boys from the prison they were living in, to help them end up with a home somehow, that they could be mobile and to be free and to be safe in. And I'm not kidding when I tell you, three weeks later, late, while I was at work, I received a phone call from someone she had never met and someone I hadn't spoke to in at least 25 years. During that phone call, I was told by this person that they had heard about Marcus and Max and wanted to build us a brand-new home fully handicapped accessible for our boys so they could be free, mobile, and safe. I cried like a baby when that news came. Fast forward two years later, that dream became reality as we said goodbye to our old home and moved into our new home where we now reside. Our boys are free. They can move around on their own. There's no place they can't go, there's no place we can't go, but they can't go also. We have a wonderful home in a great neighborhood that we know has wonderful neighbors all around us. A lot of them are in this room. We were living on cloud nine, a dream come true, a godsend. Well, for four years, we did it. Until later, riding outside, and I hear a lot of loud boys going down the road. Sounded like an earthquake. I went, what in the world's going on? I get down and there are little white boxes up and down the road, flags on. Truck says something about geological testing. Turns out, they were performing seismic testing for Poet. Testing our neighborhood and how we react to earthquakes. But why? That's when I learned that Poet had partnered with Voet with dreams of their own to build a carbon capture site where those are pumping massive amounts of CO2 into the ground in our neighborhood. Now, I didn't find this out from Poet. Now that Poet contacted me and talked to me. And they probably didn't talk to half of you in this room. They did talk to people who paid them, who they did business with. Wasn't me, I didn't matter. But we play some of them, all of you mattered. Every one of you should have been contacted by Poet. Who damn Towneville should have been contacted by Poet? Did you think they did? No! No, they cared about the people stole corn, they cared about that. I know they had meetings behind their backs, they didn't have a meeting with me. I'm still pissed off about that. Anyways, I found out from a former neighbor what Voet was up to. Arguing, our safe place for our boys could very well be turned into a nightmare. When I told our boys, a book of disappointment in our eyes was about more than I could stand. It seems like their dream could very well be short-lived. You see projects like these come with some very real risks, as all of us know very well by now. We didn't need you to tell us. We've done research, we're not dumb. Four years, blow on my mind. It kills me to know that all the love, time, and hard work put into our home for our boys may have all been from nothing. So some of my thoughts, I was always told to love your neighbors. And I do love my neighbors. I don't have to know any of you in this room. I love every single one of you. God knows of all the same, so I love you too, all of you. I was raised to treat people the way you want to be treated. I could never fathom, in a million years, the idea of pumping massive amounts of CO2 into the ground, knowing it could harm my neighbors, not for any amount of money, not for a 45-Q tax credit, which is, by the way, the only reason you're doing it. People from your home, yes it is, people from your own Voet facility have said that out loud. You wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't for that. And you know it, we're not stupid, none of us. I wouldn't do that to my neighbors. I wouldn't do it to you, I wouldn't do it to any of them. So I hope this plan can be stopped for my family's sake and for all of yours too. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me ramble. I'm done. Okay, next, we have a David Pile, David? Did you sign up or is there another David Pile here?
I'm already stoked.
Okay, I wanted to make sure it was, you just check that off. Randy, David? You wish to speak? No, okay. We're going, Scott Sheehan?
Thank you for the time tonight. I just have a few questions. I live about two miles north of Poet in Urbana. I've been there a few years with my family. I'm in my mid-30s, planned to retire there. Planned to be here for decades, unless anything changes. But we bought our forever home there, had several people help fix it up. And my main concern is really just understanding the science behind the concerns here. The well water being contaminated would be an issue, obviously, for my family, I believe, two miles away. What is these, like, can I get some more, like, some studies or some scientific facts about guarantees? I've been looking for more guarantees, okay? I'm looking to be here for decades. Guarantees that my well water would never be contaminated?
I think that's a great question, I appreciate you asking it. And I think clarifying what contaminating well water means.
Yeah.
What it means is, you've got CO2, if there's not enough carbonate within the aquifer, so if you have 1% calcium carbonate, you're accessing a buffer of the CO2. And the pH of the water doesn't change. If there's not 1% calcium carbonate, then the CO2 can change with pH of the water and yes, it can start to pick up the other things within the aquifer. The solution to that is a water softener, an RO water softener.
I believe we have that installed. Did you say RO versus osmosis?
That is correct.
But as far as guarantees, there's gonna be, you know, decades into the future, this isn't gonna affect the community and our surrounding area. Is there a map that you guys have that would show, like, if something were to happen, this is the radius of influence?
We are responsible for everything. So yes, if, we have our monitoring well operational, pressure and temperature, so we know that nothing is past that, right?
But do you have a map of like the, because I'm just two miles, do you have a map, like, top-down?
Not within my presentation, I apologize. But the area is roughly 0.6 of a mile around the Voet facility where the well will be.
How big? How tall is it?
0.6?
0.6. 0.6 of a mile radius is after 12 years where the CO2 will be.
Okay, so you're saying 0.6 miles from Voet be where the well is?
The well is on Voet's property. And then 0.6 of a mile from where the well is, is the plume area. And we've put a factor on that, because it's not a perfect circle.
Plume being if it got out into the air?
Underground. So you're judging your sequestration wall and 0.6 of a mile radius around that sequestration wall is where the CO2 will be?
You had mentioned funding for capping the well and maintaining it. I think you said $10 million go into the EPA. Is there any similar financial backing for the community in the case of, I'm just looking for, again, more financial guarantees. Something happens, the community would be taken care of.
The way that the Class 6 permit is set up is it does go to the EPA and then it's them that distributes the funds if there was an incident.
But 10 million would be sufficient for all the studies?
More than, more than, way more than sufficient, yes.
Thank you for that question, my name is Susan, by the way, I also work for Voet. Part of the Senate Bill 47 that was referenced earlier that passed this week also includes a set of fines established by the Indiana Department of Natural Resources for noncompliance with their permit. And as mentioned earlier, that will be happening in the next couple months. So not only is there the financial assurance of the EPA that he talked about, but also any noncompliance at the state level has been identified as law.
But as far as worst-case scenario, you guys have to truck in water to me for decades. There's funding to bring in for all the surrounding people if our well water was shut down?
The worst-case scenario is water softeners, RO water softeners.
So you're saying that would take any contaminant out?
Yes.
I just have one last question. The last question I had was more, just, the gentleman before mentioned tax funding for this. The 45-Q, is that what he said? The tax, tax...
45-Q is $85 per so many metric tons they get, that's why we're gonna cut some to you.
Yeah, my, I guess it's not a big question, my statement was more, I feel like this is coming from Washington DC to our area. It feels more impacted by Washington DC's initiatives to give tax credits and watch the impacts go to states and peoples that may not necessarily agree with the environmental issues. And it's a lot of taxpayer money that, I don't know, could you comment on the taxpayer maybe subsidy that might be going towards this?
Sure, so the 45-Q tax credit is kind of, is a baseline and it is a credit that is available to help scale out these carbon capture projects. And what we really believe will be the opportunity is here is long-term market development. And the reason that we're looking into this and pursuing projects like these is not for credit, because the credits come and go. We see real opportunities to be able to participate in these lower-carbon liquid fuel markets, not just from a policy perspective, but because the commercial customers are hard to manage. And so in places like California with a low-carbon fuel standard, for example, our largest export partner in Canada is implementing a nationwide low-carbon fuel standard. They spoke to the potential of the growing markets around sustainable aviation fuel. Ethanol is a very suitable feedstock for something like sustainable aviation fuel, but it has to meet, by definition, a certain carbon intensity threshold to qualify as a feedstock. We see those things as the real market potential that are not just bringing value to Voet, but are bringing more value to every bushel of corn that's grown throughout Watah County and beyond. And, you know, the 45-Q is one factor that is helping to give some assurance to significant investments that are needing to be made in equipment to do projects like this.
Federal credit?
What's that?
Federal credit?
Yes, it's a federal credit.
So do you see directed? That was the only question I'm concerned on. Thank you, guys, for the time.
Thank you.
Matt Ward is on here, is the name check, does Matt like to step forward or not?
Sorry, that was me too, I just...
Sorry about the sheet, I knew we were speaking. Mr. Turflinger?
Uh, Mr. Turflinger?
First off, I'd like to thank all of you for serving. I'm a little bit of a year seven in those seats and I'm not, can you hear me? Um, I'm a retired pipelineer. Um, I served the last 10 years of my career doing cathodic protection, erosion technician, non-destructive testing on pipes. Uh, what? Vault, okay. Okay, so in 2005, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in 2005 released a report that says that governments worldwide have spent $30 billion on subsidies for carbon sequestration. Globally, 149 projects to store 130 billion tons of CO2 annually were proposed to be operational by 2020. Of the 70%, were not implemented due to limited one-off capital grants, the absence of measures to address long-term liability for stored CO2, high operating costs, limited social acceptability, and vulnerability of funding programming to external budget pressures all contributed to project cancellations. In July of 2024, CCS is in operation at 44 plants worldwide. I'll say that again, worldwide, 44 plants. So when we come back to long-term, long-term CO2 leakage, I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize this and try to stay under the, what happens with supercritical CO2 is once you inject it below the cap rock, it tends to rise until it's trapped against the cap rock. Once it encounters the cap rock, it spreads laterally until it encounters a gap. If there are fault lanes near the injection zone, CO2 could migrate along the fault to the surface leaking into the atmosphere, which would be potentially dangerous to life in the surrounding area. If the injection CO2 creates pressures underground that are too high, the formation will fracture, potentially causing an earthquake. While research suggests that earthquakes from injected CO2 would be too small to endanger property, they could be large enough to cause a leak. And according to the ITC, ITCC, well-managed storage sites likely over 99% of injected Retain, I'm sorry, I just skipped over part of this. Well-managed storage sites are likely to retain over 99% of the injected CO2 for more than 1,000 years, where likely means is a 60 to 90% probability. And the reason for that is estimates on, on long-term leakage rates rely on complex simulations since field data is very, very limited. There's only 44 worldwide. The very large amounts of CO2 are sequestered, even a 1% leakage rate over 1,000 years could cause significant impact on the climate for future generations. So pull back up your big blue map there of Michigan and all that. So what happens if we all start punching it into all those, those areas right there? We could all be in trouble. And then, uh, one other thing here that kind of falls into my area of expertise, I'm sure everyone here has, uh, seen a piece of broken concrete with rebar in it. And their, uh, their, uh, their, their deposition here, their four-inch pipe with all the concrete around it, layers and layers and layers. Think about the last time you saw a piece of broken concrete with rebar in it and all the rust and corrosion. Uh, there's another piece that I want to get to here that talks about, uh, is 2024, the oil and gas industry is involved in 90% of carbon capture capacity and operation around the world. Collectively, all of these facilities capture about 1,000th of global greenhouse emissions. So when you inject this, there's imperatives into CO2 streams like sulfur dioxide, water vapor, they can have a significant effect on the phase behavior and could cause increased pipeline and well corrosion. In instances where CO2 imperatives exist, a process is needed to remove them. And then when you scroll down to the rest of the committee's report, it says 20% of the captured CO2 is injected into dedicated geological structure like what we're talking about doing here. And then it goes on to say that, because, it goes on to say there that it's, uh, generally less expensive than putting it in when they, when they use it for fracking, for oil. So these underground units, it's generally cheaper. So what they're saying in two different places is they can cause corrosion, but if you're doing it in geologically, you probably don't need to put any oil. Corrosion's corrosion. If you get water in it, you know, you said you're putting water in that, in that space. At the end of the, at the end of the day, I don't understand how this is good for Waukesha County. And I'd also like to focus on, uh, Indiana Coke, it's in the 14s, but it was mentioned several times tonight. This is approved as a pilot project in Vermilion and Veyron counties. And that pilot project doesn't expire until June 1st of 2028, so I don't know why we're even here talking about this. I talked to Andy Zane and he said this is approved as a pilot program. What are they doing? Why are they running around permitting and getting ready to punch holes? Follow the money. Thank you.
Uh, next on the list here, Kyle Sparks. Does Kyle want to step forward?
Uh, my name is Kyle Sparks. Urbana, Indiana. Um, I'm a local farmer. My cousin and I have an operation, uh, corn swaging. Can anyone hear me? I, like many, found out about this through a farmer friend. And I have several questions regarding the proposal. First, why are landowners being paid $225 a acre per year? Additional, will this be paid out at all or both?
This may be the best slide to reference. So, you know, similar to, you know, for pointing at the, maybe talk about the trend, you know, if you have natural gas under your property, it's your natural gas, you can drill for it, you can access that natural gas. Similar, you also own the nut climate. So if someone wants to store fluid in the nut climate and they want to ask you for permission to do that, then we're offering, offering to compensate people for their permission to do that.
Because it seemed to me like this is a way to buy off the farmers and buy their permission to put the well in. Also, if this was to have a negative effect on our ecosystem, what about the farmers that own or rent, or not own, rent land near where the wells going in? If it has a negative effect to our ecosystem, am I going to be compensated? Cause I do rent land and have a lot of money with us to do that, man. Am I going to be compensated? Should something go anywhere? Any kind of negative effect?
What, what, what type of negative effect are you talking about, sir?
Well, I mean, what if carbon seeds have been the dirt of the atmosphere ecosystem? What happens if something goes wrong? And we have a major effect?
Just, that is our responsibility.
Okay. So if something goes wrong, will we reimburse our cash?
Your arrangement with the landlord is none of our business.
Cause I know my landlord will be getting my cash money on top of the payment from Vault or whatever you said was.
Sorry, can you repeat that? Yeah, well. I'll, I'll attempt. I'll attempt to answer your question.
Uh, Susan Peoples, Susan, I saw you here.
It's Suzanne Peoples. There is a Susan Peoples, so I would say Suzanne, so she doesn't get blamed or anything. And I have just three points I want to bring up. I believe it was Mr. Pyle, you, both of you have given us many facts tonight, but one of the facts that you gave us was that the corn yield had doubled since 2008. What did you say?
I said that the corn yield in the United States has doubled since the ethanol industry has come about.
Which was what year?
Uh, I would say the early eighties.
Can you give us the amount that it was and is?
I don't have the national statistics in front of me, but, um, I know that we're approaching 200 acres per day, so.
Is that for Indiana or US, do you know?
Both.
Okay. Because of just a lot that we, we researched, it's not nearly doubled, but you said since the early eighties?
Yes, I'm just pointing out that corn yields have significantly increased during the existence of the ethanol industry and the ethanol industry has consumed a larger portion of that corn.
And the reason I was asking this is that, um, I'm just checking in because I want to make sure that even the simple facts, that you're getting them correct, so that we can believe the big facts. That's my fear.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Um, the second thing is that I understand it's Vault's first, first carbon sequestration, is that right?
As an organization, this would be fourth or fifth in line for Vault.
It is the fourth or fifth? I thought we said, I know there's none in Indiana, but this is Vault's fourth or fifth? I thought tonight it was said it was your first.
We, we have other projects that we're working on. We're working with seven different ethanol plants across the Midwest.
But the same type of sequestration?
Exactly, exactly the same thing.
Okay. But you've never completed one?
As Vault, we have not. Our team members have completed projects.
Okay. But as the Vault, the company is not, well, that concerns me because there's no foundational historical proof that'll work, like you say, well, and it's all, I heard this word already, but I had it down, it's all theory. And there are no happy projects even in Indiana. And then thirdly, um, would you continue this project if the federal, federal subsidies were to move today or tomorrow, would you continue it? I know the questions have been asked similar to that, but I just wanted to hear for sure.
That's a good question. As I mentioned before, uh, this is a baseline credit to help, uh, give some certainty around the significant investments that need to be made for a project like this to be forward. Uh, and, uh, we believe that expanded market access, uh, is what's really going to continue to keep a project, uh, like this alive.
So yes or no?
There, there is a significant cost to entry, the upfront cost. Okay. So, um, the credit helps to bring projects like this to Waukesha County, so that local corn producers can benefit from the long-term value added to that.
So is that a yes or no?
I, I believe I answered your question.
No.
I, I understood that you said, I guess you're not gonna answer it, so I'm not being rude, but I was gonna go ahead, since you're probably not gonna answer. Um, the, I understood you say 90,000 gallons a year that you produce, how much money per gallon in subsidies do you receive?
We, we don't receive a, a, a subsidy for our ethanol per gallon.
Well, for this project, how much would you get for this carbon sequestration?
The value of 45-Q is $85 per ton of sequestered carbon data.
Great. Um, and like I've said before, um, this isn't our first rodeo for Waukesha County, and I feel like that many of the people here are very knowledgeable, very intelligent, and when we don't have answers, we don't know where to find them. Thank you.
Next, Amy Lyharber?
Thank you. My name is Amy Lyharber. I have 32 years' experience with the Natural Resource Conservation Service. I have an agronomy and soils background. Um, I have been talking to several colleagues, um, primarily in Benton County with the Whitey Project, that was a pipeline that was projected to go to the west part of our state, also to end in the Mount Simon sandstone layer. I've also talked to the Vigo County and Vermilion County folks. Both of these projects in the state have been eminent domain. For those who do not understand eminent domain, that is when the government comes in and takes our rights as a public landlord away from us because they feel that they know what is best for us. Eminent domain is not to be used in utility and private money, and that's what these projects are being used for. One of my concerns is this Mount Simon sandstone layer. If it is being used for this project and the Benton County project, how many other companies are going to come along and say, oh, we're going to put it in this Benton, in this Mount Simon sandstone layer as well? There's no information ever on this, on how much this area can hold. You showed the purple map of it being in four states. Um, there's nothing on, in history, you're saying Alberta, Canada has been doing this for 12 years, 15 years. That's not a long time in the history of CO2 being put into the sandstone layer. This is extremely scary stuff, folks. It's extremely dangerous. If somebody had asked the question, if negative effects happen, you've got $10 million to take care of this. It's not if negative effects happen, it's when it will happen.
And next, Larry Carter. Is Larry Carter here? Does he wish to step forward? Corey Rice, I think that's the name. Corey, want to step forward? We'll move on. If not, Tammy Ingles. Tammy?
Um, Tammy Ingles, your friendly local research scientist, the environment is one of my favorite subjects. I'm also a staunch Democrat, so I'm about to surprise a lot of my neighbors with that. Also noteworthy is that I retired from a company that produces arguably the highest quality corrosion resistant and high strength alloy materials. My work was literally analysis of materials in highly, extremely corrosive environments. What do you say about the lack of corrosiveness? I'm difficult to accept. While I do applaud most efforts to control carbon dioxide and other atmospheric compounds that contribute to climate change, this isn't the effective way to do it. My research has found that carbon capture is of little benefit and more risk environmentally, but as an investment scheme can be highly lucrative in the short term. Long term, it does not have legs. Carbon capture is a feel-good endeavor for people who don't want to put the effort into actual carbon-reducing activities like mass transit, ride-sharing, reducing... actual carbon-reducing activities like mass transit, ride-sharing, reduce dependency on fossil fuels, works from home, and thoughtful environmental responsibility. What gets me is that the pressure required to sink any carbon requires additional energy, which unless your energy supply is renewable, you're burning more fuel and still putting CO2 into the atmosphere. You recommend it, you recommend it to the one gentleman that would buy our own water softeners, so you suggest more energy usage to manufacture than we must consume to protect ourselves. Sounds seems counterintuitive, and it is. You mentioned the EPA and IDN, but what good is that when the Environmental Protection Agency has just been figuratively demolished? There will be zero oversight for the pursuit of the future, and IDN is so toothless that we know companies view the possibility of fines as a small risk of doing business. That's why Indiana already has the most polluted waterways in the US and all of our territories. Our air is almost as polluted. Lastly, we need to understand clearly how any proposed tariff with this will affect this project, that hasn't even been addressed. And lastly, bottom line, we simply do not know the long-term risks to our earth, and the next seven generations of our children is who I am thinking about. I do know that the earth does not need for us to continue drilling more holes to compensate for all the other holes we drill. Let's find better ways to control our carbon, because this isn't it.
I've got a name on the list here, and I'm not sure if it's, whether you do or do not wish to speak the ex-ord in between, but I want to ask John Klein.
John Klein, North Manchester, didn't have anything planned for this evening, I just had other people have to say, I liked a few of the comments, really enjoyed her comments, she was just saying, I think carbon capture is a good idea for the time being, but going forward, we do need to reduce dependencies on fossil fuels and reduce how much carbon we are producing. It's amazing how much CO2 that facility puts out in a year's time. I didn't know how much it produced, that's why I'm here this evening. So I have done some studies, just reading about carbon capture, I think it's a positive step, but maybe not an overall solution. So maybe one day, people will embrace the thought of renewables. I like ethanol, but I don't like the corn, the food, is being used to produce it. Ethanol can be produced with switchgrass, so there's other options. One thing I've learned is that people support what benefits them, and they're always against something that doesn't benefit them. I'm sorry. So hopefully you heard that last little bit, I'm not gonna repeat it. So that's all I have, thanks, have a great evening.
I've got another name on the list here, and I'm not sure about the spelling of this thing. It looks to me like, and I might butcher this, Brody Michael? Brady?
Is it possible that it's Becky Merkel?
Could be, I can't read it. If you say that, and you mark the box, then you're it.
I didn't mark the box.
Becky Merkel, there you go.
Thank you. I'm from Wabash County and moved to Chicago, Indianapolis, and that's where I still live, but I have landed with my brothers and sisters, most recently from my uncle Eugene, 800 north, 200 west. And my question is, the trucks that were in that picture, you said those were for food purposes, oils, things like that, what are the trucks for? Are they to transport CO2 in any way, shape, or form?
Good question, thanks for the clarification. This is at another Indiana ethanol plant, this is not at Poet North Manchester. They were capturing the CO2 here, and they're putting the CO2 into those trucks for other uses.
So that has nothing to do with the project here at Wabash County, for transport?
That's correct.
Of the material that's coming from your plant?
Correct.
That's CO2 based?
Yes, half of the Poet facilities across the corn mill do capture CO2 and transport them in trucks like you see there.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, is there any proposed ideas by Poet and Vault to sell your services to other CO2-producing plants, so that you are making profit on sequestering other plants' CO2?
We work with seven different ethanol plants today, Vault works with seven ethanol plants.
And does that mean that there will be CO2 somehow piped into your sequestration sites?
No.
Or?
No, it is not.
It will only ever be the site that's located across from my uncle's land on 800 north?
Yes.
Only that CO2?
Yes.
Okay. And the other comment that I wanted to make is clearly just to the audience, and is that in reading about the CO2 capture, it's clear that there are much better methods coming down the pipe very quickly, and there are filtration systems that are being developed by Argon Labs, University of Illinois, Chicago, that have nothing to do with putting it into the ground, they are filtration systems that make CO2 harmless. So by the time this project gets up and running anywhere in the United States, there's already going to be better, safer methods, and that really bothers me, because it looks like we're jumping into something that's a money-making project, that's not going to cure the ills of the industry, as the Democratic woman pointed out. So, that's all, thank you.
Next, Cruz Edmond.
Thank you, Brian, thank you guys for hosting us for your service. Just to touch on that last one, you talked about would another pipeline be brought in, would you be trucking any CO2 into other locations? Whether it be by semi, whether it be by train?
No.
No, okay. At a previous meeting that we had, and Representative Poet and Vault were there, and they said that they shouldn't have to wait for us to get our ordinances in place, because it's going to delay their project. And they were very impotent about that. And you said you've not submitted to the state, but I sounded it, you've already submitted to the state as of July. And if you said you've not, because they're still working on regulations, I believe we deserve the same courtesy that we get our ordinances in place. Before Vault and Poet start saying, we need to do this now, time is of the essence. Go ahead.
We've submitted with the federal EPA, we have not submitted with the state, that was only clarification, sorry, correction.
Okay, well, that's all right, but they did make it clear that night, and they were very unhappy. And if, I think if you guys are waiting for the state to complete their site, I think you should be willing to wait for us to complete our site.
I appreciate the comments and the question, and we want to, so this process, like Craig mentioned, with submitting the application to the EPA, being a two-plus-year process, I don't think there's any, there's any intent to not be working closely with both the state and the community. I think if we realize that we do have this two-plus-year window, as we continue to vet out the dual ordinance of the project, work through the EPA Class 6 process, that allows us the runway to make sure that we're, we do have the time to be able to engage with members of the community, and like the plan commission, the county commission, to make sure that the ordinances are in place for these types of projects to move forward safely and responsibly as, you know, as partners in this community. So if there was any sense that that was not what was being discussed, you know, that's really, I think my point here is that the EPA has a very long window, and we want to take the time to work, to make sure that at each level.
But they're not, they were, we need to get this done, we can't wait for you to get your ordinances, and they were about to push it, and that does not bode well then. And so, and you can say, no, that's my feeling, that's why I felt there were some things that were said. What happens when this deal is compromised? And our water is compromised? You know, at what point then do we go, ah, man, darn it, I know reverse osmoses, I know I've heard your explanation of all that, but really, when it comes down to it, how do we put a Band-Aid on that? How do we fix it? Because we really don't know the full implications of it. And so I'm just posing that question up there, something that we need to consider. Fires don't give us clean water, $10 million doesn't give us clean water and a good way of life. Okay, I'm just going through this because some people already covered some of these things. Who determines the length of the project, 50 years? What happens if years 75, engines are compromised? How do we know that we have guarantees in 100 years? I won't be here, but my grandkids and my great-grandkids, they will. And so how do we guarantee that there's going to be somebody here? Poet's not there, Vault's not there, and $10 million is a drop in the bucket, and now suddenly we've got a problem. This is, the big scheme of the CCS is in its infancy, and it wants to be a part of the big experiment. How do you guarantee that that carbon that's sequestered in that .6 miles, how do you guarantee it stays there? Do you put something in it to make it conform? Because in my mind, it's just what you're spreading out. So how do you determine the boundary? Do you tell the state?
Sorry, Mr. Osborne.
Did you tell, did you just tell the state and listen? I mean, it sounds stupid, but that's my thought.
So there's water in the Mount Simon right now, right, very salty water, and when you're pushing against the water, it pushes back, right? And the water holds the CO2, when you stop pushing, the CO2, yes, the CO2 is going to dissolve into the water, eventually it stops moving, and we can track it with 3D seismic technology, we can see where the CO2 is. And there's an example, I don't have it within my presentation today, but in the 90s, there was a project in Norway called Sleppner, and there's actually a pretty good public document that they shared that showed how they did track the CO2 flume. It's actually quite instructive, so that was in the 90s.
What about homeowner well monitoring? I know you're monitoring the site with your monitoring, but what about people that are, I was right next to those sites, I really want to have my water monitored, I want to know what I'm drinking.
We've offered that on a quarterly basis throughout the life, before the project through the life, yeah.
So everybody's well in that area, each individual homeowner, their well would be tested?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
So every three months?
Yes.
Or four months, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Speak your name.
Go ahead. I thought you'd added me, sorry. Oh, no, I didn't, sorry, that's my fault, I didn't add her, she came in late.
Thank you, I'm Rose Lynn Rich, I'm a family doctor for 45 years, award certified in family medicine, integrated medicine fellowship, and certified in functional medicine. I was born and raised in Wabash, I lived in the city, I went to this school, and this project really matters to me. I know in Australia, they banned this sort of operation, in Queensland, in the Great Artesian Basin, because of concerns about contamination. I see the effects of environmental contaminants on our health, and there's nothing more precious than our water, and nothing more precious than our health, and it's just not worth taking notice.
Dave, my best for two minutes here. So I am Dave Blocker, I just got a couple of quick questions. How big is a unit? You mentioned a unit is a number of acre of lands, or how much to be able to put a project on? Maybe that was answered already?
I don't have that off the top of my head, sorry, Dave.
You're putting a project on ground, how many acres do you need? Is it a mile radius, is it a two-mile radius to be able to, the unit?
Yes, sorry, I could answer that earlier, sorry. .6 of a mile.
.6 of a mile, that's all you need, so if you get .6 of a mile, radius around Poet's land, where that well is going, if you have 70% landowner approval, you can put this in, is that correct?
No, he's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have it?
Sure, do you have it?
We've got over two-thirds of the land reserves support for this project.
No.
What is the, what is the definition of reduced carbon fuel? What is the definition of reduced carbon fuel? The whole purpose of all of this is so that Poet can generate and sell reduced carbon fuel, what is that?
So, the carbon intensity of fuel is based off of a lifecycle analysis of the production of ethanol or whatever other renewable that you're producing. That's based off of Department of Energy's Argon Great National Lab grid modeling, and that defines your baselines for what your carbon intensity scores are. And by utilizing, so for example, say your typical dry mill ethanol plant right now, nationwide would be, you know, somewhere between 15 and 16 CI on a lifecycle analysis based on things like carbon capture, in this instance, reduces the carbon intensity score per Argon REIT's model by, oh, third one.
Are there other methods of carbon capture to create reduced carbon fuels? Or is carbon sequestration the only one?
We look at carbon capture as really the most viable option today.
So how much less CO2 is created in the manufacture of reduced carbon fuels?
Technical attributes of.
This carbon score, carbon reduction is measured in grams of CO2 per mega joule, and it's measured
I cannot express an app on you. If we're not involved, we don't know what's happening. And Facebook does not always give you all your information. So, please participate from here at the county level to the state level, to the federal level. Thank you.
I have a couple more questions after listening to the presentation. You said, told that lady that there was going to be no outside of Wauwawash County carbon brought in. Can you explain to me why in your easement agreement, Chapter 3, 2A, that makes a provision, pay the farmer's back script if you bring in third-party carbon?
I'm not a land professional. I'm not privy to all of the discussions that they had. I told you we're not planning to bring in third-party carbon.
I understand that, but the agreement that was circulated definitely calls that out and also takes away mineral rights because if this stuff gets away from you, it gets up through the cap rock because in a lot of places it's used to recover oil, to make old oil wells, and Wauwawash County is full of them, makes the oil come to the surface where they can get it. So is your IRO system going to take the crude oil out of the water if it gets away from you? And the other thing that's in that easement agreement says that if a farmer signs up, or a landowner signs up, I don't want to pick on farmers, landowner signs up for this sequestration project, they can't drill no oil wells other than a water well on their property. So crude oil started bubbling up in their backyard, they can't sign a contract with an oil company and drill on their own property according to the easement that was circulated.
We are not intending to lease mineral rights. And I'll have to go double-check what you're referencing, I don't have the agreement in front of me. We are not leasing mineral rights.
I know you're not leasing mineral rights, but you're preventing landowners in the agreement from signing an agreement with anyone else but Vault to drill on their property.
We are preventing anyone from drilling a well through the cap rock.
Exactly, exactly. So if that gets away from you and right above it, there's a pool of crude oil and property owner wants to sign a contract with Mobile Oil to get that oil off of his property, he's prohibited by the agreement with Vault from doing that. So I just ask you to get on board with the rest of your team and get us a straight answer. And my other question is, and not to take away from this board's responsibility, we have a question for Mr. Franks. I have a little bit of experience of a small, I'm talking about the eminent domain. Okay, I have a little bit of experience with a small group of people deciding what everybody else is going to put up with. Is there any way to put this on the ballot unless the people in Wauwawash County decide if they want this board to give a permit or not?
No.
There isn't?
No. The best way to do something like that is to contact your state representatives.
Okay, and speaking of which, for those of you that are holding your breath and hoping for the DNR, Wauwawash Valley Carbon, which is a subsidiary of the trash company, has bought a plant in Diego and Berlillian County, and they're the ones that got the pilot program. And there's a state senator, a state representative, one of them took $5,000 in political campaign contributions, the other one took $37,000, and they both resigned after these bills got passed on eminent domain and this carbon sequestration. It's supposed to be a two-year pilot program. And lo and behold, when you start looking, our governor took $57,000, and the two gentlemen that resigned, discount appointed, one of them was in charge of the Alternative Energy Committee for the state of Indiana, and the other one's the new head of the DNR.
Correct.
So don't hold your breath, hoping for any help from Indianapolis. Thank you for your time. Again, thanks for your interest.
Can I add one more comment real quick? I'll make a really short sweep, like 30 seconds.
Come up here.
First of all, you guys were talking about there's natural gas and stuff in the ground that's under pressure all the time, you know, so there's not a lot to worry about that. Like, is this, there's other things in the ground under pressure, right? You said that natural gas is under pressure. So we shouldn't really be worried about the CO2 because we have natural things under the ground. Did you guys realize in Africa, and I think it was 1986, in Cameroon, I believe is what it was called, did you realize there was CO2 underneath of a lake that was put there naturally? Nothing to worry about, this is natural. It belched from that lake naturally, killed 1,760 people, 3,500 had livestock, every plant, animal, bug, for 15 miles out. It wasn't compressed, it wasn't shoved out of it, it just belched up, killed people. They forgot to tell us. But also, did how many people in the crowd here knew that you could go to Poet because it was easier for Poet? I have it on my phone, I'll read it in a second. But you could go to Poet and have your own little private meeting, one to three people, probably never more than three, because it was more beneficial for Poet, easier, more constructive. So I sent an email, I heard that from somebody I trusted. I got the email back, I screenshot that part for all of you. Sorry, I'm shaking, feel like I'm going to pass out here. Regarding your question about public meetings, this is from Poet, and I quote, "I want to be clear that we are not trying to limit engagement or avoid conversations, really. Our approach has been to have smaller, more personal discussions so that we can better understand individual concerns and answer their questions directly. Those efforts are going to be ongoing, and they will continue." Did you guys get asked, raise your hands how many people got asked to have their private little meeting with Poet? You got one, God bless you. Anybody else? That's crazy, that's weird. I don't know if you're supposed to be doing that. It's right here. I was invited to go, I'm not going to, but I said it'd be short, it'd be sweet. I'm done.
I'm Poet Rurabaker, I live two miles north of Poet's land, and I also have a former 10,000, had all his path marked in Poet. When we started this project a little over a year ago, when we started the project a little over a year ago, we came to one of these in the office of Poet. At that time, I could hear that it was six or 10,000 acres that was projected to be what Vault wanted to handle the problem from the ranking. Then at some point, it was reduced to, I believe, 6,000 into 3,000 into 1,700. As landowners, we thought we had our heads together. We find out a couple weeks later, we're down to 1,000 acres, so sorry, you're out of luck. What? How much smaller can we go? We started big, and we feel like, I feel like, we've worked, dealt a real square hand. Smaller, smaller, smaller. We thought we were doing the right thing, and we're out of Poet. I'll take my answers as I sit down. Thank you.
We, thank you for your question. And we started with a, you know, a very large area because we needed to do some seismic testing to understand if there were any faults in the area. And we heard today from, I think, Mr. Klutz, talking about faults being a potential pathway for leakage. Through that seismic testing, we found that there was no faults in the area. At that time, we were still looking for a place that could be suitable for a well site. So we're looking at many different areas around the facility. After confirming the geologic environment on the facility, it was determined that was the best place to put a well. The other information that came back from that seismic testing was the thickness of the interval. So if you have a thicker interval, you need less space because it's an area, right? If it's a thin mountain sediment, the CO2 spreads out further. If it's a thicker, it's more like a pop can instead of a pancake. So I apologize for the miscommunication through that process, that's learnings for us. Our intent was not to mislead you. This is a contained project on Poet's property, and it is a smaller area than maybe originally anticipated.
How many acres is that Poet is counting on their own ground? Are you counting their own ground on those acres that you're kept in this?
Poet, the well is on Poet's property, and Poet's property is part of the area.
How many acres? Are you counting on Poet's ground to cut the acres you own?
Yeah, all of the acres that Poet owns.
All of them?
Correct.
How much is that managed? How far out?
I could reference the top look, but it's over 100 acres.
I think it's over another 85 acres by number.
Yeah, mine's short and sweet. This is the first time I've come to a meeting about this. My name's Dave Cummings. I just got some questions. Originally, I didn't know anything about this until I sat there and shook the ground outside my house and everything else. I called David, asked him what was going on when I heard about it. You were going out a mile and a half. Now you're six tenths. I bet six tenths of that, 85% of that is Poet property, or is it six tenths from the edge of Poet property?
Six tenths radius from the well bore, from the sequestration wall.
So how many acres are you, in that six tenths, does Poet not own?
A significant portion of it.
All right, how many households are in that six tenths?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
So, but you're only going to be responsible for them. That's all I got to say.
My name is Brenda Barber. I think the question that we're trying to find out is how many landowners, you said you have two-thirds of the people needed, of the landowners needed to complete this project, but yet we are asking, how many landowners are there in that amount besides Poet?
I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can speak to that, mostly because we want folks who are currently considering these opportunities to be able to make that decision, and it's unburying.
We're not asking their answers, we're asking how many are kept?
Yeah, I think, I don't think that's a number that we have readily available tonight. Sorry, thank you.
So I think what they're trying to get to is, I've seen the ones that have signed up, they're spread out all over, most of them are not within that .6 miles. So is all the people encompassed in that fairly large area? Are you planning on getting 100% of those signed up? And if not, is it eminent domain on the remainder? Because that percentage would be much bigger than what you currently have leased. That's what I think they're trying to ask.
We're not just pulling any acreage that's signed up and saying this is part of the area. The area is, it is a continuous area of where the CO2 is going to be, .6 of a mile, right? It's a continuous area, we're not just picking random acres from around the county.
I'm not saying you're picking random acres, I'm saying that there are some people who have signed leases. So if my hand is the lease, and you have a farm at my thumb, and a farm at my, at each finger, you have a lot of porous spaces between that, let's take Vault's in the middle. What I'm asking is, all these people between all my fingers have not signed up, are not interested, are you planning on doing an eminent domain? Because at the November meeting, you did speak of 10,000 acres, you wanted 2,000 acres, you'd like to have six, and now we're down to what I think is one. You don't like the idea of the county having the opportunity to put a moratorium on something that they had no idea was coming. So it seems odd that you shrunk it to 1,000 acres to hit the 70%. So my question is, because you've been pushing at the State House to get them to agree, I had hoped that they would choose the 85% to help protect us a little bit more and give us a little more time. So the question is, are you taking eminent domain on the others? That's what people are asking. We're concerned, you guys tell us you have, that we have a whole year, but we're feeling push from you, and you feel like we're pushing you. So it goes both ways on that. So the question is, and the reason I'm asking here rather than privately, is so that everyone can hear, because I haven't gotten the answers that I asked at that meeting. And so my question is, you shrunk it to 70% to make it feasible for you, are you planning on doing the rest with eminent domain?
We are seeking 100% participation. And we have achieved 99% in another project, 96% at another one. People, yes, I understand this is new, this is something different, and we need to work through all of the risks, we need to talk about it. I understand the communication hasn't been the way that we would have liked it to be. We don't hold private meetings so that we're, to be not transparent. Not everyone feels comfortable asking a question in a room like this in front of people. So they feel more comfortable asking it when it's around the table. So we are seeking 100%. We have achieved that in other areas very similar to this. That is our goal, and I think we can get there. This is new, I understand. I understand you guys want some time, I understand that. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not here to speak for that, I'm an engineer. And I understand the subsurface very well, I understand the area, you know, the different seals and protection, but that is what I understand very well. We are seeking 100%, that is, that was our goal from the get-go, that continues to be our goal today. Why did we bring up the comment? Well, there are people that support this project, there are people that support other projects in Indiana. They understand the benefits of it, and we, once we've worked through and we have a good discussion like this, I really appreciate the invitation, and everyone's time to come and listen to us, and listen to some of the science and the facts behind this. Our goal is 100%.
We'll hold you to that, 100%.
You didn't answer the question.
Yes or no, eminent domain?
Are you going to use eminent domain or not? Or pooling, as you called earlier?
Through, we talked about Indiana's sequestration, right?
Yes or no?
There is a pooling process that Indiana has not developed yet, it is being, how can I answer yes or no to a rule that hasn't been written yet?
People don't want to audition for their meeting when they're busted. Just answer the question.
I think the problem is eminent domain is a concept that is used for service. Again, we've talked about this well site is on Poet's private property. We also talked about how there is rulemaking happening at the state right now that deals with things like unitization, which the question is, if more, if less, if 70% agree, what happens in the other 30? And we have to watch how the state puts that rule out and how that compensation comes. And I think what Craig is trying to get to is, we will continue to work with landowners, we will continue to have these one-on-one conversations with landowners when they have questions about the agreements that are presented to them, and our goal is always 100%. And we will continue to work for that. When it comes to the unitization, Commissioner Ross, I would suggest that we engage really closely with the rulemaking as it goes through Department of Natural Resources and the state, try to identify how they will dictate what that compensation looks like for unitization.
The answer is yes.
So with that being said, let's say you start pumping down, you start pushing it in, you do your seismic testing, you find out that it's went beyond your space, then suddenly you go to Suzie Q over here, and then you pay her, you force her to take it because it's already there. How far do you go? How much land do you get to take regardless of what your attempt was originally? The 1,000 acres, does it turn into 2,000 acres, 3,000 acres, 4,000 acres, 5,000 acres? You wanted 10. I just want answers, because we need to have answers so that we can make an ordinance.
We've talked about the area the CO2 goes, the radius away from the well bore, there's a bigger area for the seismic surveys, because of the aperture of the seismic, so I think that maybe there's some confusion on the area that we would like to have access to for our seismic surveys versus the actual area the CO2 will be. When you conduct seismic surveys, there's an aperture of the sound waves, and you need to be outside of that area, so it's a much bigger area you need to acquire seismic. Is that, I'll clarify that?
So, no, not really. So you're telling me that, or you're telling us, that you're going to lease more ground than what you need so that you can do the seismic testing on that area because Suzie Q over here doesn't have to let you on her ground, but you need to know this information? So when you get to that .6 miles, you're going to stop pumping it down, you're going to cap it off, and it's going to be finished?
We would be in trespass if we're going, our intention is not to trespass.
And you wouldn't do eminent domain? I mean, what if you do trespass, then why?
So eminent domain is a very, as Susan mentioned, it's a surface concept rather than unitization. You know, unitization is something that we're quite familiar with. You know, the Trenton Formation, there's probably 20, 30 Trenton wells, I don't know, maybe 800 feet from here to the north. There's injection wells, water injection wells in the Trenton, this is something that's very well known. You know, if you want to go access the value from your property, you own the Trenton, you want to access the natural gas there, it has to be unitized because you're pulling natural gas from under other people's property. It's not a new, it's not a new concept.
But you're pushing something down, it's not natural.
This is the same thing that's happening just north, they're pushing water down. The water that comes out from, from producing natural gas and oil, they're class-two water injection wells, this is not, this is public knowledge, that there's water injection wells just north of here, into this formation, the Trenton Formation.
Because they're doing fracking, is that what you're saying?
No, they're not doing fracking, they're doing water injection. It's a class-two water injection.
All right, people, just watch your State House, watch for what they're saying, and contact your legislatures. But I don't think that quite answers my question, but thank you.
Okay, I think we're getting to the point where we're ready to wrap up this here. Anyone else?
So if there's, if there's landowners, there's like, maybe...
We need you to come up in the press.
I'm John Hart-Saul, with land of 850 north across from Poet. The focus has been so much to name toxicity, and if any of you have spoken of pop can, that is a highly concentrated source of CO2, carbonic acid. The breath we breathe out is at least 100 times more concentrated than CO2 in helping prevent. CO2 in and of itself is not toxic. At the state diagnostic lab, we kill chickens for necroxy by putting dry ice in a box, not because CO2 is toxic, but because the chickens pretty much, they'll use up all the oxygen in the box. I've been in communication with Dr. David Lerrick, the environmental science professor at Richland Community College, that's right on the south edge of the Farm Progress Show site. APM has been putting, practicing carbon sequestration initially for 10 years, and in a big way, for eight years. They have a sequestration education center there that is operated by Richland Community College. And I really think it would be a good idea to charter a bus and go to that education center where kids from K through 12 are taken through there every year. So that's a suggestion, I think a good bus trip to Decatur and learn more about the APM situation would be quite good.
My name is Tony Meeks. This question, this is the only question I got. You said it's got a 12-year lifespan, correct?
We submit our permit for 12 years.
Okay, what happens after the 12 years?
You go into a period called post-injection site care. So there's 50 years, at least 50 years, we have to monitor the site form. We have to prove that the pressure has returned to normal pressure, the CO2 is not moving. We have to prove that through many different ways, through seismic, through our monitoring wells. And at the end of that, once we've proved that, then we can go and plug our wells. So way over and above the standards for other wells.
So no, I'm asking, you cap it off after 12 years?
You move into your post-injection site care period, so that you're monitoring, using your wells to make sure that the CO2 has not moved upwards, and then at the end of the period, you can cap your wells.
So after the 12 years, when you start monitoring, where does the CO go that Poet's still producing? Like, is it still going into the ground? Is it going out back into the air? Like, after you get to the 15-year mark, cap it off, I hope Poet's still going, good for the community? Where's the CO going then?
We haven't defined where the CO2 will go in 12 years. Could it possibly be used for something else? As, you know, someone mentioned, there's other things to use CO2 for in 12 years, possibly. We haven't defined, this project has, an application's submitted for 12 years, we haven't defined what the CO2 is going to be doing. I shouldn't be speaking for this. You're right. Did that answer your question?
David Turcler, I just wanted to say, you know, we all need water, we all perish without it. This feels like, because of the lack of information, like it's a major threat to our water. I can't predict tomorrow any more than you can. So if you're feeling animosity here tonight, I personally will apologize to you for that. However, you had the opportunity, because I personally asked you last November to do this meeting right here. It shouldn't have fell on the planning commission to have to call this meeting and set all this up. All the prophets sitting right there at that table, and again, I'm trying not to be adversarial, but you had the opportunity to be clear, truthful, and share the information with our community, clear back in November, because I personally asked it. And the answer I got was, in essence, no, we want to divide and conquer, we want to do small groups. So I genuinely do apologize if you're feeling animosity here tonight, and I hope that you understand where some of it's coming from. Thank you.
I got one thing to say. So when you talk about, we're going to make the CO2 from the atmosphere and inject it in the ground, you're not considering the fact that back in the ground, that's another atmosphere. So you're not doing anything with carbon. You're just transforming from one place to the other. And then, as I sit here and think about stuff, I'm trying to figure out why the world is living in your guys' best interest. All of a sudden, we're going to be responsible for everything. We're going to be responsible for everything. We've got $10 million set aside. We're going to do all this stuff. We're going to help everybody out, right? You have to go to an awful lot of risk, awful lot of trouble. I don't understand why. Why are you putting yourself out there for this?
I really, I really just wanted to introduce myself. I'm a Colonel Olson Detective Director of Citizens Action Coalition. We were mentioning earlier, that's what I felt needed, to say something. We've got resources on our website at CCS. We have chemical engineers, geologists, and geophysicists on the container. So if you folks have questions that you'd like us to ask them, we'd like to offer ourselves as a resource. I'm not here to debate CCS. We have strong opposition to CCS, as, as many folks know. But I do want to make two points. Number one, the 12-year plan is simply because of section 45 to tax credit. At current time, it's only 10%. And the other thing that troubled me in that presentation was the implying that a 4% concentration of CO2 is similar to wearing a mask for five minutes. I believe they evacuate buildings at a 3% concentration of CO2. And if you look at OSHA, CDC, and others, they'll tell you, 4% concentration of CO2 can be fatal. So I was a little dis, it irritated me to see a dismissal of a 4% concentration. That's sort of not a good deal. And the last thing I would say, should this project move forward, the idea that there's not going to be any monitoring outside of the fence line is extremely wartsome. Because that stops the highway. You know, supercritical liquid, as has been explained to me by chemical engineers, is a gas that's been turned into sort of a liquid and it's fighting with itself because it wants to be a gas. But you're making it be a liquid under constant pressure and it's going to move. It's going to move. And the only operating facility with a current EPA class 6 permit is already violated. Their permit with migrating CO2 to areas that was not supposed to go, citing Clean Water Act violation. Additionally, the pilot project in West Harrowood, Indiana, Dino in Millian County, just so you're aware, that class 6 permit has been remanded back to the EPA for further review to explain the short tenure post-closure plan that they had. Primarily, I just wanted to say hello. Keep fighting. We're Citizens Action Coalition. If you need help, look us up. Okay. Looking like I'm not seeing anybody. We appreciate everybody coming tonight. I'm sure you've got other questions. There've been some people here offering for, you know, consultation, you know, to answer The board tonight, we need to have a brief discussion on what we, what we need to do. Okay, so it's informational only. We have a board meeting the first Thursday of every month. So I guess I'm in a position for a join one.